Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We will have Pastor Linda Ross give the invocation.
Good evening to everyone, to the mayor, to the council members, to everyone that is present here today this afternoon. We are gonna go before the Lord in prayer. Father, in the precious name of Jesus Christ, we thank you for this opportunity and every opportunity that we have to be able to come before you. We thank you, God, in these last days, you said that I will pour out my spirit upon all flesh. So on tonight, God, we thank you for the anointing of God that will be poured out in this meeting, that we'll be able to come together with the meaning of the heart and the mind. Oh, God, that the decisions that are made, God, it will be the godly decisions that you have put into the hearts of the council and even those that will receive what has been brought forth from the council, that it would be received in grace. Father, we thank you for this community and every community, and you rule over the community. And so I thank you for the very spirit of even what the word says, common unity, that we come together and begin to do what we need for one another. Now, Heavenly Father, I pray for those, I see the police officers and those that are standing in their stead, that you continue to watch over them, continue to watch over those that walk through those doors, God, in the name of Jesus. Make yourself known to us as never before. We pray right now for your divine protection in everything that we do, because we, first of all, acknowledge you as God over our lives. So Heavenly Father, we give you much praise, much glory, much honor, and we turn this meeting into your hand, that you can receive the glory and the honor. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Item number three, adoption of agenda. Do you all have a motion?
Second.
So move.
All in favor? Item number four. Approval of consent agenda.
Move that we approve.
All in favor? Any opposed? Alrighty. Now we have comments from attendees.
Got news.
No, sir. Sorry, I'm a Marine, so I kinda talk kinda loud. My name is Esco Latimer. I live at 98 William Street, so I'm the guy with the orange door and the really green grass.
Yay, I know what you're talking about.
That's what everyone calls me. Esco, E-S-C-O. So last name is Latimer. L-A-T-I-M-E-R.
You live where?
At 98 William Street.
By Crawford Professional.
Right across from Crawford.
You got the big wall fence.
Yes, I do. I do. Oh, yes. Yes. So, I've been living in Hamlet for about two years now, and horticulture is kinda like a hobby of mine. So I like to beautify things. I've always been into that. I went to Clemson University, so if you're not a Clemson fan, that's okay. But I took a horticulturist class and fell in love with it. And as I'm looking at the city and I see that the potential what the city can do, I thought, well, it was a good idea if I started that in my corner, 'cause I thought it was a good representation of what the city can be and can look like. So 74 is a main road that goes through, right? Everyone pass through there. So I wanted to be a good representation of what the city can look like, and it can look like that. I've seen these homes. I went back into the history of this town, and I saw when the trains, the train company was here, CSX, and I saw what those homes looked like then. And those homes were amazing then, absolutely amazing. Now that, they have fallen from that grace. And I think that some simple things and some suggestions, again, this is not a bashing session, this is not what I do, alright? I fight a hierarchy of authority. I'm a Marine. And what I'm thinking is, hey, under the charter, I looked at the charter, and under 19.5-7, it says tree maintenance. And under that section A, it says, "The city horticulturist or the city manager, designated, should have the right to plant, prune, maintain, and remove trees, plants, shrubs within the line of all streets, alleys, avenues, lanes, squares, public grounds, as it may be necessary to ensure public safety, or to preserve or enhance the symmetry and the beauty of the public grounds." Now, I have taken upon myself to do that on my own side. I cleaned up my own sidewalk. I cleaned up the grass that grows over into the street, so people can walk and use the sidewalk. I see people going up and setting for all the time walking, and I think we have so many senior citizens in my neighborhood that now they started using the sidewalk because we cleared it out. I talked to one of my other neighbors, Bruce, he just moved in there, well, he's been there since nine, but he just came back, and I helped him clean up his trees and his curb. So it can slowly happen, and the city has the authority to do this, and I'm not saying that you have all the money in the world. Hamlet's a small town, I understand that maybe resources are scarce and few, but if utilized correctly, I think you can do small portions at a time. And that's all I did at that house for two years, that's all I've done. Each time you come by, you probably saw a transformation of that house. Something was always different. And that was this one day, I took a weed eater and I started with the sidewalk. I didn't get all the grass off the sidewalk, but I just gradually worked it and worked it and worked it. And then I built the wall for many different reasons. So, and I planted shrubs, you know, and then I put the sod down. And 74 is almost to me like the calling card of Hamlet, right? So when people come through from Charlotte to go to Murder Beach, which I've come through here, I didn't even know this was Hamlet. I came through, I flew flying through here, right? Do the speed limit, but I was flying through here, alright? So, but it wasn't, it wasn't, it didn't say, hey, I wanna stop here. And then after I bought a little scooter and I ride around the whole city on the scooter, and I'm saying, man, I can't even ride my scooter on the sidewalks, 'cause I gotta run out in the street, and, well, the drivers are amazing here, so that's not a good idea, right? That's not a good idea. And when I go down 74, I don't wanna make a right and go get some great seafood. Seafood is absolutely amazing, like, absolutely amazing. Or maybe I want some country eating, 'cause I'm a country boy, right? And I wanna go to Seaboard, right? Or maybe I want a coffee, 'cause I came through that morning, and I wanna go to Axon Grind. But nothing says, hey, stop here and spend your dollars here, spend your revenue here, get your gas here. It makes me wanna just take a left and keep going down 74, down to Laurinburg, going down to Murder Beach. And I think the city is missing the opportunity to do some very small things that could capture dollars that could benefit the city tremendously. That's all I'm asking for. I'm not dictating what you should do. I don't know what your plans are. I'm not on the city council. I'm not the boss of anything. I'm not the mayor of anything, but I'm just making some suggestions. I get stopped when I'm in my yard in the summertime, probably three to five times a week. What did I do in my yard? How do I do it? How much did it cost? That one little house drums up that much questions, from state troopers who cover the entire state, to people who are passing through that, hey, I've never even noticed your house was even there. And that's absolutely crazy. So I'll end it with this. My grandmother used to say to me, as a country boy, I don't know, most, I think everyone's grown up around here, so she used to say, "We've got company coming," right? And when you got company coming, that means it's time to clean house. And when people come from Charlotte to Murder Beach in the summertime, we got company coming. It's time to clean up.
Have you got any suggestions, any areas that you think you could maybe give some attention and suggestions to, and maybe get some volunteers to help, or give some advice to some of these property owners?
Definitely. So what I did with Bryce was, I said, when I saw him, I said, hey, this is what I did to my curb. Do you want me to help you with yours? I took my tools, I took everything I had, and I helped him out. So maybe some volunteers, we can hit that from, from my house going up, because that's when it kinda slows down, right? You know, I think we need a red light over there too, but that's a whole nother agenda, right? So, but it slows down right there. So a lot of times I had to keep my dog, make him sit so he doesn't run out there. But if we start from there, that's when it slows down, people are looking at that point, 'cause I was looking. That's how I found the house. And then from there all the way up to where you make the left to try to go underneath the trail tracks, I think that that would be a good opportunity for the city to utilize some very minimal horticulture care, trimming the trees, cutting the grass, trimming the sidewalks, cutting the grass out the streets, and say, hey, this is like a nice town. One other thing I would like to suggest, and if you don't mind, and humble me, and I'll be quick with this, is maybe three little, little green signs that highlights those three businesses that are there, because I never spent my money here. I will tell you this, since the two, here in the last two weeks, I think I've eaten more here in the last two weeks than I have in the last two years, because I don't do a lot of fast food. I'm not a fast food kinda guy, obviously. I think I look like that, I don't like fast food. But what I do, when I spend money, I go to Raleigh, I go to Charlotte, I go to Greensboro, I go to Murder Beach, I go everywhere but here. In the last two weeks, I've gone to Seafoody three times, to the point he gives me discounts now. I've gone to Seaboard once, because, well, I can't eat too much fried chicken, 'cause my cholesterol goes up, but I'll keep going. And then Axon Grind, I've been there twice for the football game. And it's a nice little get out, right? I go, I sit down, have a beer, I watch the game. I enjoy it. And I think that those three little things can say, hey, we are here, stop and sit down and watch, you know? The little wife maybe painting the buildings down there, make them uniform, you got blue on this side, green, brown, and yellow, you know? And maybe take that creepy mannequin that's in the window downtown out of there, that thing is creepy. But take that out. My daughter called it a ghost town. I was like, oh my God, no way. My daughter, it's something else. But I'm just, these are humble suggestions, that's all I'm saying.
Can you put some things in writing and send it to us?
Yeah, I don't have a problem at all. No problem at all.
We very much appreciate what you have done to your property, and it definitely stands out. And if what you're doing can, you know, spread out with some initiative from residents who can and are able to, you know, do that kinda work in their yard, that would be great.
I think so, 'cause people turn down my street and look at the house and stop and ask me. Then right after they pass my house, it just goes, down here from there, you know? But what if you captured those dollars? What if we captured those nuisance sign homes and we rebuilt those and brought in those taxes? That is revenue. When I see a nuisance house, I see revenue that the city is missing, and it's an opportunity for the city.
Well, we're working on those. But thank you very much for your comment.
I understand that we're gonna have some engineer people come up and inspect our sidewalks, inspect on Main Street and Hamlet Avenue, and come up and see. And we don't wanna do anything and have to redo it again.
Agreed.
So we'll take their, we'll take their recommendations and consider those.
Awesome. This is what Grandma used to say.
Huh?
Remember what Grandma used to say?
I didn't hear.
Remember what Grandma used to say, "Company is coming."
Company is coming, yeah.
Company is coming.
And you'll get it.
Alright, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Alright, who else? Denise?
Good afternoon, mayor, council, staff, counselor.
Good evening, Gerard.
First responders, good to see you. It's that time, three weeks, three days, and a wake-up. John Coltrane Music Edutainment Fest, where we bridge education with entertainment. Address is 1935 Guio/Osborne Road in Hamlet. Starts at high noon, 12 noon to 5:00. We moved it up an hour as far as the closing time this year. Y'all forgive me, I'm hoarse tonight. But I'm reading from the script tonight, Amy, that's rare, right? Celebrating roots and talents of North Carolina Sandhills and South Carolina PD regions. Types of music, family-friendly, ballads, beach blues, bluegrass, classical country, folk, funk, gospel, go-go, hip-hop, jazz, R&B, neo-soul, reggae, reggaeton, rock, salsa, swing, and others are welcome. And we're welcoming artists, authors, poets, dancers, designers, models, musicians, producers, and singers. And we're always seeking community-oriented exhibitors, sponsors, supplies, vendors, volunteers, donations. Phone number, area code, 347-286-8742. 347-286-8742. It's our 16th year, it's week 16. Wanna love to have you out. This year, you know, John, we're not just music, we're edutainment. So some of the history.
Glad to hear that, brother, speaking there.
I'm an Army vet, he's a Marine vet, but we're gonna serve some love tonight. Big Maurice, Maurice's dad was Navy, and of course, John Coltrane was Navy. Not sure if you knew this, the first black commissioned officer for the Marine Corps. His name Frederick C. Branch. He was a captain, and he's originally Army, but he came, he was born in Hamlet, and he came from here. He went through OCS and went in the Marine Corps at Quantico.
Will you be performing?
Will you be performing? Now, sellers, if you see that, you come out there with me. We'll sing, we either get booed or we're gonna have a good time, so. And I've got, you know, we don't tell the show, but you're gonna be shocked. We got a dancer that you all notice around, we got some poets that are gonna shock you, 'cause in between performances, we deal with community issues, so be it health, veterans, education, community building always, and that's the anchor of what we do. But the biggest thing that comes out of there, the networking, you're gonna be shocked at how many people are from this area and things they do. Abby and Maurice have been, love to see y'all there.
October 5th?
October 5th, always the first Saturday, 16 years straight. And any questions, let me know. But the other piece, it actually slipped my mind, but today would be my paternal grandmother's, her name is, was the late Dorothy Louise Strong Johnson. She will be 105 years old today, she was 11. So in heaven, I just wanted to make sure we send out. She left the Hamlet in July 15, 1937, on the train. She retired working with the Bureau of Printing and Engraving, Department of Treasury, printing money. That's right, we all appreciate that. But love to have you all there, that's the biggest thing I wanna drive. And in this audience, I wanna send a big aggie pride out, and to my classmate Denise who's coming up. Raise your hand, Jennifer. We got an author in here, also with the North Carolina NT, the illustrious school that Maurice and I talk about. So again, showing the talent that we have right here, as my granddaddy says, rats here. We always polishing the diamonds in our own backyard, I mean backyard. And thanks for first responders. Good to see you, chief.
Thanks, Gerard.
Gerard, why don't you bring your tickets to this big crowd here? You could've sold some tickets for that.
Alright, brother.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Councilman. I've got two things that I wanna cover today, and the first thing is Doc Hill's Family Care Home. Wanted to provide you with an update. We appreciate all of your support. Doc Hill's Family Care Home is located at 302 Spring Street, right here in Hamlet. Wanted, Lane, Mr. Lane and Mackenzie, I don't see you up front anymore. I guess you moved to the back. But I haven't been here since y'all have shifted a little bit, and it's great for, to see y'all in those positions. We look forward to collaborating with you further. Wanted at least acknowledge our folks back here. Thank you so much for your service and all that you do. One thing I wanted to let you know, when it comes to Doc Hill's, we have now have our state license in hand. We just received this a week ago, a week and a half ago. So we are official, the doors are actually open. And with that opening, we have started a partnership. We have a new partnership with the calendar, with W A Y N 900. And in our spot that we have, which is on Sundays, and Ms. Jennifer's gonna give you a copy of the calendar, please tune in. We're talking about just different things that happen at Doc Hill's Family Care Home and surrounding events in our community during our time slot. So we look forward to possibly maybe getting some of the council persons or the mayor on, in, to help talk about what's going on in Richmond County or in Hamlet. Also, when it comes to Doc Hill's, we had on the books a scheduled cookout that we were supposed to do, but however, we didn't have our license in hand. So you know, that starts the domino effect, you don't get your insurance to cover the event and so forth. So with that being said, we have rescheduled. We've got a rescheduled community fest sponsored by not only Doc Hill's Family Care Home, but W A Y N. We also have the community partnership with Cultural Queens and Mega Park. So we do have that collaboration. We've given to the city manager, hopefully we, we know it's under the 120 days, but because we were already pre-approved, hopefully we can kinda move that a little quickly. But that is scheduled for October 12, and the times have changed to where it's gonna go between 1:00 and 5:00. Now, after our cookout, we still continue to do, after we clean up, we're taking our festivities to the Mega Park from 7:00 to 9:00. So I want you to come out and support that, both the cookout, and we'll give you some more information. We'll shoot you guys' emails as we regularly do, just to remind you, October 12, from 1:00 to 5:00, and then at Mega Park from 7:00 to 9:00. I also wanna give a thanks, because Doc Hill's put a request in for a speed check sign that now sits outside of 308. The digital platform is currently down, but nevertheless, it has slowed the traffic down on Spring Street drastically. I don't know if you guys have the ability to extract that data to see, and the folks, when you see that sign, you automatically tend to slow down, 'cause you don't know if it's recording you, taking a picture, or what it's doing, but the traffic has slowed down. So we have a fighting chance for our residents to cross the street without getting hit. And with that being said, that is the follow-up for Doc Hill's Family Care Home. Any questions?
Glad to hear there's some reduction in speed.
Oh, my goodness. Now, that doesn't count the accident that just was just on Spring Street, but that was just a driver that hit cars parked along the street. So we've got cars being parked on both sides. It's just not enough room for two cars coming down in order not, so, but that wasn't due to speed, which I'm glad to hear. Any questions for Doc Hill's?
Congratulations on your state licensure.
Thank you so much. We worked so hard for it, and we were pleased with the outcome, definitely. The other thing I wanna put on the table, excuse me just a second, is for our nonprofit, Swell, STEM Wellness Empowering Lifelong Learners. The last time we in front of y'all, we put a proposal out for our Drone Academy, which you guys fully supported, and we actually had an indention on the water bill for about two months about this particular program. Well, before I get into the details of the proposal, I wanna start by sharing a case study with you, which illustrates the power of community-driven initiatives. This case study provides a compelling example of what's possible when we combine youth engagement, environmental stewardship, and local revitalization efforts. I comment, and I look forward to speaking to you after the meeting about your opportunities that you have. The project scope and resource allocation for what I'm talking about in this community study is a cleanup that took place on August 30, 2024. City of Hamlet undertook a pivotal street sanitation project focusing on the section of High Street stretching from Spring Street to Highway 74. This project addressed a segment of the city that has not been maintained in two years. The project's scope and resource allocation that the city did cleaning one side of a city block, that's only 25% of the full block's perimeter, they deployed six city workers, five utility trucks, in a tiered staffing approach where from 6:17 a.m. to 10:41, one worker was there. Five other workers showed up from 7:32 to 9:00 a.m., and two workers showed up, and additional two workers showed up to cut down the trees, and they worked from 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. This is a disproportionate allocation of resources for the limited scope raises serious questions about the operational efficiency and resource management practices within the city sanitation department. When you start looking at costs, the direct labor costs, if you look at the average person was probably making $16 an hour, but we know some more are making more than that. The total labor cost was $220 for a total labor hour of $13.75. However, I want you to keep in mind, that $220 does not, and it significantly underestimates the true cost that the city paid that day for services rendered on 25% of the block. The operational costs of the utility, five utility trucks, didn't include the fuel, the maintenance, nor the depreciation of that truck. The overhead costs did not include the supervision, the planning, and the administration of this project. It also did not include the equipment and supplies used in this cleaning and this process. What I'd like to do, Ms. Jennifer, thank you so much, pass you out your handbook. I need for you to turn to page 16. I actually provided you with before, during, and after photographs to show. When you look at page 16, you've got three pictures that show you the before. This is what two years of un-maintenance does to the city sidewalk. The next one, you look, you see your trucks, they're in process, they're working it. All six, all six employees, all five trucks, okay? After pictures, there's two photos, and this goes into what my neighbor, my resident, resident of Hamlet also said as far as the maintenance of sidewalks. When you look at the picture to the left, it shows you two trees. Well, on the opposite side of that are two more trees. So my question to you is, who's gonna be liable for the city attorney, not if, but when somebody trips and falls on this city maintained sidewalk? Because the issue is, is that the two trees that city's supposed to maintain, and the two trees that the property, property owner's supposed to maintain, the roots have connected in the middle, which has risen this sidewalk. So now we've got a trip and fall hazard. We've got an issue that when somebody trips and falls, who's gonna be liable to pay the bill? Is it the city, or is it the resident of the owner of the property? Nevertheless, if the streets were maintained earlier, or sooner, or more after, more often than once every two years, we could've identified this problem long before it got to this, to fix it, before you now have to replace that whole patch of sidewalk. I'd be interested to see, interested to see if someone that was on that job actually put a work order to fix this sidewalk. Up under, it goes into my proposal that is on, that is further back in this handout, the proposal of what a swell project looks like. It shows you, well, let me, let me go back just a minute. When you look back at the picture on High Street, this is the after picture. This is what one side looks like, the other picture shows what the other side looks like. Learned skills were truly missed, and I would deem this project unsuccessful, because if you look at the one, opposite side of High Street, you've got one side that's manicured and edged up, but they didn't edge up the other side of the sidewalk, nor did they take the grass growing in between away, nor did they take away the grass growing in the street. So when it comes to beautification, I have to agree with my fellow resident. It's not looking appealing for no place for Hamlet to be, to come, live it, to live, work, nor play in Richmond County, in Hamlet, when it looks like this. When you look at the other picture at the bottom, this is what it should look like, and this is a swell completed project. I want you to notice that both sides of the sidewalk are edged up, inside in between is edged up, the street is edged up. It's attention to detail, it's a skill learned that has been missed with your sanitation department. So with that being said, I do have a proposal. It goes into grave detail about what we could do, the financial responsibility that not only business owners have, but what residents that live not only on Spring Street, and, or I should say, the corridor from Highway 74 back to Washington Street, everybody has a financial responsibility in maintaining and keeping this property looking inviting for people to want to live, work, and play, and relocate into Hamlet. Our goal, our proposal goal is to improve the urban sanitation and cleanliness, engage and empower local youth, promote STEM education and skill development, foster community pride and involvement, and implement sustainable environmental practices. Our expected outcomes is we're, we could have a cleaner, more attractive urban environment, increase youth employment and skill development opportunities, we could enhance the community's engagement and civic pride, we have the ability, and let me say this twice, reduce municipal maintenance costs, reduce your costs to maintenance, improve environmental awareness and sustainable practices, and the potential for our program to replicate itself in other parts of the city. With that being said, I want to leave, it goes into further details as far as implication, financial responsibility, liabilities. We're looking to have a one-year contract with the city of Hamlet, and for your observation and review. If this partnership could go through, our, the city is not responsible for anything that swelled from, from 74 to Washington Street. We assume all liabilities. Our insurance covers all liabilities for youth working under our program. Because of the constraint in time, and because others have to speak, and I do want you to review the proposal so that at the next town hall meeting, we could sit and we could have a conversation about where we go further. That gives you a time to read, to do the data. One thing I wanna leave you with before is the fact that everything that we're doing comes from the strategic plan that you put in place of what it's supposed comes from the strategic plan that you put in place of what it's supposed to look like. But we base that standard on not only what the City of Hamlet's beautification goals are, but we match it against what the county says we need to look like to invite businesses and residents here. We took it another step forward, because we looked at the North Carolina Strategic Plan, compared what we are doing to that as well, also to the federal plan of the WIIOA. Our plan and what we have forth going forward to make this project work, to not only make the beautification from Highway 74 to Washington Street look more presentable and safe, bringing down the liability of the city, is that we can move this into other areas of the community as well. The biggest thing for us in the takeaway is youth empowerment, and with that comes decrease in vandalism and decrease in crime. I'm sure you guys would appreciate that.
I thank you for your comments, if I may speak now, not even...
Yes, sir.
And I feel your pain about the way the city looks, and the way the ratty streets, and it starts with leadership. But on Spring Street, I know that they come back and they take the vehicles that are there, parked there with no license tags on it, and they're moved. But then in a week or two, they're back on the same place, on the same thing, and the community, you know, is an ongoing battle with it. And so the community can get behind the fellow, their neighbors, and say, "They get your junk off the street and put it where it belongs."
Well, and that's part of what Swell is looking to do. We're literally, because not only we're looking for the city to help and support, but we've already reached out to businesses, we've got their support and their finances. We're actually knocking on doors, we're doing grassroots, we're knocking on doors and letting them know what their options are, what they can and cannot do. And one, the biggest thing is, who's cutting your yard? Because if you're, the city, we could come in and we could clean up, city's responsibility, but if the yard doesn't look any better, we're running uphill battle. So, as I say, we got an app for that, too.
And we've got the resources. I mean, that's the sad part. We've got the resources, we've got to do it. But when we got the police department to go there and they'll ask them, "What's the next option? Just take and bring their record in, haul them off?"
And what I would like to do is, once we are dealing with the community, we will help them understand this, the towing and the keeping this street and the goal, and the biggest thing for us is, can you not park in the front yard? Can you actually park where you're supposed to? Beautification is our key, because Spring Street is a main hub, it is a main corridor. And if I can't, and everyone on that panel remembers what that street used to look like, and to what it looks like now. Our goal is to get the street, not only that street, but every adjacent street from Highway 74 to Washington Street, look good.
Good. I like that.
So that is our goal.
Have you met with other residents?
Beg your pardon?
Residents, other residents? Have you talked to residents?
Oh, yes, we have, yes, we have. And we're getting a lot of support. We haven't, I can honestly say, we haven't gotten any negative response, because it is not a quick knock on your door, this is Avon calling. We're actually giving them some detailed information of where we're transforming, and we've gotten a great, we've gotten a lot of good support. The residents are susceptible. Now, the biggest challenge that we have, not only with Spring Street, but other areas, you're having to deal with transients, they're renters. So not only are we talking to the people that live there, we're actually talking to the owners as well.
There's a lot of absentee ownership on Spring Street.
Lots. Thirty-three percent of the homes between that corridor of Highway 74 and Washington Street, 33% of them are vacant or nuisance buildings. Our goal is to, we've got to clean it up, so it looks inviting, so that people could come in and want to buy and get rid of some of these nuisance properties.
What would you recommend with a nuisance building?
Is that Washington Street or Highway number one?
When you're on, when you're on Highway 74, on the back of that, right before you get to the Dobbin Heights corridor, I do believe that's Washington Street, that goes that way and bumps into 77.
Okay.
77. I want to say it.
Yeah, behind my motor.
177, thank you. So my expectation, the way I would like to leave this, is I want you to have the opportunity, look over the case study that's in here, look over the swell proposal, and I will be back here the next city council meeting, so we can discuss how we go further.
Miss Covington, any questions?
Yes, ma'am.
You said something about some of the structures being labeled as nuisance buildings. I assume this was a signage that gets placed there when the property's dilapidated, is that right?
Correct.
What is your proposal for that?
First of all, we got to make contact with the owners. We have a different set of questions, or scenarios, or assessments that we do. We're going to look at making contact with those people to let them know, because they very well couldn't not know the condition, because...
Well, the city's already done that, if it has a nuisance.
As far as cleaning it...
Yeah, we have.
Cleaning it to, the lawn care aspect of it.
Well, once we label them as a nuisance, we have to contact the property owner and tell them what their options are, or what will be, what will happen, and they don't respond.
Well, maybe we could help you with that.
And it's what you're asking for, it's just not an overnight or a short-term solution to it. It's really, as Ms. Covington said, when you get no response from them, and then you just keep going.
It is not. That's why our implementation of our program will happen in phases. And we will outline those phases after you've had time to look at the proposal. We can then present you with the outline of the phases on how we're going to attack which grid. It's a total of 10 blocks that need to be addressed, and all of those are not city-maintained streets that we're addressing, but we're encompassing all of that, because it takes that whole area to make it...
The whole community.
Beautification, right.
Well, I feel your pain, yes, ma'am. I can't hear her.
She probably needs to, you need to finish before she comes up here.
Let me finish.
Ma'am.
Gerard, let her finish.
Yeah, let her finish, so she can come up, and it just makes it flow better. Thank you for all you've done and all you've talked about, but I just want you to know that the city can't go on private property and cut grass and...
But we're not asking the city to go on private property.
Okay. I thought that's where you were headed.
No, no, no. No, what I was saying was, we're looking at the city's responsibility that needs to be done. We have the rest, where we're actually contacting the residents on what we can and cannot do as far as getting their lots looking in a respectable order. Because we can't get the city's portion right if the resident behind that well-manicured sidewalk is not correct. So no, we're not asking the city to do any intervention as far as our contacting of the property.
And just for the record, I mean, the city has been actively involved in these properties, and I don't want to throw anything on TC, but there's a property within two or three blocks of where you're talking about that had some structural damage, and we were trying to get that condemned, to get it taken down. We're not talking about cleaning it up, we're talking about a building that could cause damage, and ultimately did cause damage, and we've been in the process with that. Roughly, how many months have we been involved with that?
Oh, years.
Just roughly.
Years.
You're talking about the Eden's property, correct?
Right, absolutely.
It went all the way to North Carolina Court of Appeals, because the family, as is their right, filed appeal after appeal, and I think it just resolved within the past few months. We've been at it for about two years.
About two years.
Now, let me be clear, we're not trying to go in and knock down buildings. We're just trying to address the yard.
Right. Oh, I get you, and I'm glad you're doing it, and thank you for doing it. I just want you to understand, I mean, there's been a lot negative said about what the city's done and had done. I just want that to be placed directly out there.
Oh, sure, we're not looking to interfere with any process that is currently or futured. Our goal is to make the lawn care of making Hamlet beautiful, not tearing down structures, and we're not going to get into whatever the attorney has going on, or, you know, whatever may be going on. Our main focus is, when you're coming down Spring Street, or any of the adjacent street, my sidewalk looks good, and at least that first front part that is being seen from the road looks good. That is it.
Thank you. We need more people that take initiative.
Yeah, we need more people with your energy and your interest in it.
Thank you for your print. You always come thorough as they can.
Well, thank you, sir. I thank you, I appreciate that. So what I will do is, I will, if you would, go ahead and put me on the next agenda. I'd like to get a follow-up to see what else, what other information that you need from us, so that we can move forward on this project. Thank you so much, I appreciate your time.
Well, why don't we stay in contact between now and the next meeting, and see how it is coming along?
Yes, be happy to do that. Inside of the handout, I am best, because I stay on the road and I travel quite a bit. Inside here...
Yeah.
Is my email.
All right.
So anybody that would like to reach out to me, you could welcome the call. If I don't answer, please leave a message, but you could get me on my email as well. So if you would like to speak with me going forward, after you've had an opportunity to read this proposal and the case study, feel free to shoot me an email, and I'm happy to meet with you.
I believe you've got your phone number, too.
Yes, you do. And I'll actually agree to meet you at Hudson Brothers for lunch. Thank you so much, everybody, I appreciate you listening, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mine is a very quick question. I am the owner of Doc Hill's Family Care Home. We would love to have you guys come by and visit, take a tour, see the place. Mayor has been by, she's been involved with this from the beginning, so please come by and take a look at the place. My question is, directly across the street from Doc Hill's, is a nuisance property? What, if anything, can the city do to help me, as a private resident, secure that property and clean it up?
This is the one that you are interested in purchasing, correct?
Correct.
Do you know who the owner is?
I do.
I would like for you to give that information to the city manager, and we'll follow up on it.
You probably need to contact the owner and see if they're interested in selling.
Okay.
If you pass that to myself, you can give it to me, but if it's city manager, hand it to him, and it'll be followed up on.
I will get that to the city manager in the morning. I did not bring that information with me tonight.
There's Mr. Bailey, he'll be there.
Hi, Mr. Bailey, it's a pleasure meeting you.
Good to meet you.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Do we have any other comments from attendees?
Mayor, just real quickly, we are getting more aggressive in code enforcement. Dalton Milton is in the audience for something else later, but we sent out quite a number of letters last week and working to address some of these issues, so, and you'll hear more about that later.
Okay, good. All right, let's see. Item number six, proclamation for Constitution Week, and this proclamation is at the request of the Richmond County DAR chapter. Whereas it is the privilege and duty of the American people to commemorate the 237th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America with appropriate ceremonies and activities, and whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September 17 through 23rd as Constitution Week, now therefore I, Amy Gwynn, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Hamlet, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17 through 23rd as Constitution Week, and urge all citizens to study the Constitution and reflect on the privilege of being an American with all the rights and responsibilities which that privilege involves, and witness whereof I here unto set my hand and cause the seal of the city to be affixed on this 10th day of September of the year of our Lord 2024. So item number seven, discussion of the depot office space rental. We have a proposal. The current rate for the office space is $500 a month. After looking at the spaces and doing the math on the square footage of each office, it is recommended if a tenant wants to rent an additional office space, a 25% discount will be applied. This discount will bring offices 205 to $375. Do I have any discussion? A motion?
I make a motion that we adopt.
So we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
I oppose it. I oppose that.
Okay, so we have four ayes and one...
One nay.
Okay.
Yeah, I oppose that.
Let's see. Number eight, recognition of police and fire personnel. Do you want me to come down there?
If you'd like.
Right.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I want to thank you for allowing us to come tonight to recognize some heroes in our community. I'd also like to thank our first responders and their family for being here in the audience tonight. I'd like to also thank our Fire Chief Trey Goodman and our Emergency Management Director, Bob Smith, for being here tonight to recognize their employees. Quickly, before I get into this, we don't have a lot in Hamlet. We're not a wealthy city. Our citizens give a lot to have the services that we have. They pay us well, and we try to deliver the best service we can, and I think you'll see that in action in this recognition that will be given out tonight. I appreciate the mayor and her assistance. I'll read something quickly that will describe the incident that happened on August 30th, Richmond's Emergency Communications Center received a phone call. Hello? It's somebody talking about my bald spot, probably. On August 30th, 2024, Richmond County Emergency Communications received a phone call from a parent stating their two-year-old child had been shot in the leg and need emergency assistance. The child was dying and needed life-saving treatment immediately. Our communication personnel, Cassidy Patterson and her supervisor Garrett McInnes, knowing Hamlet, knowing it well, they have roots here, quickly directed the parents transporting the child not to the hospital in Rockingham, but to the Hamlet Fire and Police Station, where they would receive immediate care. A lot's been said about fire and EMS, medical services in City of Hamlet. If we hadn't had paramedics and EMTs, that child would have died. Communications notified Hamlet first responders a horrific event, and updated our staff that child was on his way to the police station. Once at the police station, Captain Norris ran to the front of the building, began to apply direct pressure to the bullet-shot wound. Our fire and EMS personnel, Carlton Ganey, Justin Pruitt, Richard Lassiter, Gary Chavis, Edward Causey, and Dalton Cranford immediately addressed the child's injury, initiated incubated care for the treatment of the child. The child was subsequently transported to the hospital and airlifted to UNC Trauma One Care Center. On our follow-up investigation, we spoke to the doctor who provided care for the child that night, who stated the heroic actions of Ms. Patterson, Supervisor McInnes, and our first responders not only saved the leg of the child, but also his young life. According to the physician at the trauma center, "This group of amazing first responders are true heroes and deserve recognition for their quick and decisive action. Our community is honored and proud to have these dedicated, compassionate, well-trained individuals who are here to save lives and protect the innocent when others engage in monstrous acts. Their achievements and effort are a reflection of how great our staff are, and how fortunate as a community we are to have these heroes to protect us all." So when...
Absolutely. Thank you.
So I appreciate that. And when this happened, I spoke to Lane, and the mayor wanted to do this ceremony in front of council to show our award and thanks for our personnel and for the great job that they did.
And please, feel free to come up with your family. We're taking pictures, and then we'll have all the county come down and take a picture once we approve your board. Ms. Cassidy Patterson. Mr. Carlton Ganey. Mr. Gary Chavis. Mr. Edward Causey. Mr. Dalton Cranford. And Mr. Matthew Norris. Ladies and gentlemen, heroes.
Chief, can I say something about what is heroes?
You're welcome.
In the last couple of months, we've seen the response of our paramedics and our first responders. They brought one man back right down the street and no pulse. The man still isn't dead. They brought him back and that's enough. For this leg, for this leg injury of this child, man, that's two times.
Come on, Eddie. I think you need that front room. All right, can I get family, friends, come up here too with your significant others? Anybody would come up? Come on, I'll ask you to take pictures. Thank you all.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you, Dennis.
All right, next item, number nine, the post forty-nine baseball field agreement.
Mayor, this just memorializes what we've been doing with the American Legion Baseball Team. And they were very successful this season. And it just lays out different responsibilities. Chip Gordon has reviewed this and he is okay with the agreement. TC put it together for us. If you have any questions, but if not, I recommend approval. And then also as part of this, Mackenzie Webb and Michelle worked on a grant that Councilmember Eddie Martin discussed at the last meeting. The deadline was a little sooner than we anticipated, so we already submitted that. But if you're comfortable with the agreement, after that, we'll have them give just a very brief update on the grant for lighting at the stadium. And I think that lighting's like eighty years old, so.
At least.
Yeah.
So any discussion about the memorandum of understanding? Do I have a motion?
We need a motion to approve the agreement. I'll make a motion that we approve the agreement between Hamlet, City of Hamlet and the American Legion Baseball.
All in favor? Any opposed?
Mackenzie, get a brief update on the grant.
So me and Michelle applied for the grant at the end of August. We should hear back in about four to six weeks. It's through the Foundation for the Carolinas and the Cole Foundation. We also worked on it in conjunction with Megan Lambeth from Visit Richmond County because she's done a couple of grants through them as well. We have some quotes on the, on the light system as well as the sound system. I believe the grant we applied for was two hundred and ten thousand.
Okay.
What, do you have an estimate of the cost of refurbishing the lights and the sound system?
It was two-ten, right? Yeah, the quote was for two-ten.
So you're on good terms.
Yeah.
Any other questions? So item number ten, city manager's report.
Tried to reach out to council members to talk about the first item and left this at the dais. Back in October fifth of two thousand and twenty-two, the city sent out a request for qualifications to do lead and copper audit of all our water meters. The RFQ referenced four thousand and eighty-six users. We actually had six thousand one hundred and forty-eight meters. Some of those were no longer in use. Some of them, they had to locate. The short of it is, they had to do a lot more work than the RFQ called for. And so they've sent in a revision to the contract to go from one thirty-five, six twenty-two to one sixty-four, oh four seven. I think that's still a very good price for what they did. And I don't think anybody was at fault with the RFQ being a little off for cleaning up eighty-plus years of history with our water meters there. We're also utilizing ARPA funds to pay for this and we have excess funds in the ARPA account. We may be bringing you a proposal in the near future how to utilize some of that excess. So it'd be my recommendation is that you approve the amendment to this contract.
Any questions, discussion?
I make a motion that we approve the amendment to the contract.
All in favor? Any opposed?
Next item I have, and it may be a little bit related to some of the discussion earlier this evening about cleanliness of the streets. As you all know, we have been down CDL drivers and some equipment. And we're now back fully staffed and we're making the rounds through the city, picking up debris once a week. Now, if you put out debris on Monday and we pick it up and then that afternoon or the next day, more comes out. It may not look like that at the end of the week. But we are completely cycling through the city. What I don't think we're doing a good job of, and we're going to address, is that sometimes we don't pick up debris because it might be mixed with building materials, household garbage, or other items. And we're not notifying those property owners of why we're not picking that up. At the dais in front of you or door hanger that we're going to start putting out at doors when we don't pick up debris or other items, just to let the public know why we didn't pick it up. And then a phone number where they can call us if they have questions. If you have any suggestions or edits to the door hanger, let me know. Otherwise, we're going to place this order tomorrow and work to better clean up these areas where we've missed because of our items and the debris that we can't pick up. And one of the reasons we don't pick up the debris, for example, is where we take it, there's problems if we have building materials in there or household waste. That, we can't take it there for that reasons because of rules with the landfill, so.
What about that tree on top of the bridge there on, over the railroad crossing on one seven?
I'll mention that to Public Works Director. I noticed that today.
It's really bad on both sides.
Yeah. So there's one further down that's back of the...
It's been there so long, it's rotted.
Yeah. One further down, I think, is out of the right of way. I'm not sure we can get that, but the other one is closer, so. But we want to try to get more aggressive in the debris pickup. They've been working very hard. And I think they're doing a good job. But we need to do a better job of communicating with the public as to when we don't pick up something, this is why. And I think this is a tool that'll help us do that, so.
I like this.
Okay.
Yeah, I like this, too.
That at least keeps people from saying, it's been out here three weeks and they didn't pick it up, when in fact, they are the people at fault.
Yeah.
You know, contains things we don't pick up.
Same thing, I like it. Nine out of ten times, they know why it's not getting picked up anyway. A lot of them are going out and doing work for other people, bringing it back. We're picking it up. At some point, there's going to have to be fines attached to this because you just can't leave it there. That's going to hurt the other people. So, I mean, I would like to see at some point us here again, look at fines for those people that constantly violate what the policy says to do.
Lately.
And have teeth in them. The fines.
That's right.
We can look at that as well. But that's all I have, Mayor.
All right, so comments from council. Mr. Martin?
Well, I'd just like to commend Michelle Pressler and Mackenzie Webb and our city manager for working so diligently on this grant application for the, for the Memorial Park lighting situation. They worked very hard in getting it in on the deadline. And it doesn't mean we'll get it, but we do have hope. And I hope we do get that grant approved. Other than that, that's about all.
All right, Mr. Stewart?
First of all, to all the citizens, thank you for coming. It is our duty to listen to all citizens and we encourage you to come to every single meeting. Our information should be on website, on the website. So if you need to contact us, please contact us. The Edutainment Festival, Suite Sixteen, please support that, October fifth, afternoon. Around the city coming up, there'll be quite a few candidate forums. There's one at the senior center today, right, Michelle? Was that it? So keep an eye out for that on the senior page, maybe our city page sometimes, or different sites. Just to look at the candidates that are running for various offices. We are in for a special treat with our elections coming up, guys. And so we want every single person registered to vote. I have voter registration forms. So if you need to get somebody registered, reach out to me. We need every single person that is of age to be registered to vote in this upcoming presidential election. Thank you to all the citizens for coming. And please reach out to me for all your needs. Thank you.
Mr. Sellers?
I'd just like to thank everyone that's attended, some more especially to our first responders on that. And I appreciate all the calls that the citizens give me. And I encourage people to come to the meetings, but I had several of them tell me, said, that's the reason you're elected, to be my, our voice for how we think. And I said, thank you. And, but still continue the calls. I appreciate them. I'd like to hear your answers. That concludes my remarks.
Okay, Ms. Covington?
I want to just add to what Dennis said about the fire and rescue and EMS and police departments. What they did for that little boy was the rule, not the exception. It just, it was always quite so dramatic, but they save lives every day. They save people from heart attacks. They save people from strokes. And this two-year-old child was particularly poignant by virtue of the fact that he was shot with a pistol and ended up with charges being placed against his parents. And that's what made it so extremely sad. But their, their quick work was incredible. I happened to be coming up the street when all of this unfolded in front, front door of the police department. And, but this is the kind of service they have given this community for years. It's nothing new. It's just this time, somebody brought it to the city council meeting. And I think every day, we need to say thank you to them, not just in this particular occasion. Also, we just recently lost a longtime member of our fire and rescue division, Robin Levine, which has created a real pall in that department. And he was one who gave everything he had as a paramedic for first help or as fire and rescue for the Hamlet Fire Department. So that's, I want to extend our sympathies to his family, his children, and his wife, and let them know that we appreciate his service and everything he meant to the City of Hamlet. Also, Ms. Kozart, I want to just say your enthusiasm is refreshing. I hope it's contagious. But, you know, I appreciate what you're trying to do, Mr. Latimer. Over, I was, I watched your house because I'm, I'm a yard freak. And so I watched you as you sotted your yard and watered it and greened up and your banana trees and your wall and everything else. So I hope that you would be willing to extend your expertise to people that want to, but simply don't know what to do. That's what they need is, they just need some help. So other than that, I don't have anything else to add.
I'm going to add, real quick, Mr. Latimer, when you were speaking, she said, where does he live again? I said, the orange door. She said, oh, that's...
I knew exactly what he was talking about.
Exactly, as, when I said that.
I'd like to say also, alluding to Robin Levine, he and Richard Lassiter were the first two paramedics for Hamlet. And they've done a wonderful, wonderful job and they built up that rescue squad.
Mr. McLean?
Yes, I'm going to come see you. I want a story on the big fence. That's the first thing. So I was...
The big, oh, yeah.
He's got a big fence up there, I saw.
Yeah, he has.
Yeah, I like, I like that. I was reached out to by a few people on McLean Street that they had a pretty significant incident there not too long ago. And they had some concerns about street lightage over there on that street. And it, there is like a dark spot, like a dead spot right there. And they had requested that the city council consider placing a, a street light on that street. I, I did look at it and it is dark in that one little area right there. Sort of like a, I don't know, it's just like there's some trees that's blocking some of the other light. But the pole number, if council is interested in doing it, is pole number two-five-six-A-J. And I think in light of the current events in that area, that that would be a wise decision for us to do in that area. Is that something that we, I mean, we want to discuss that right fast, or? There is a pole there.
There's a pole there?
And that pole number is the one that I just...
And trees are...
There's not a lot on this particular pole.
Okay.
There's like a void in between the existing lights that we have. So it's not just going out and changing and putting a bulb. It would be adding an additional street light on that street.
I'm not certain how we do that here. Where I've always worked before, you get with Duke Energy or the utility and they just add that to the system. And you pay like seven dollars a year or something for an addition. I mean, it is not a whole lot for that light, but we can...
So it's not anything that would be highly restrictive or anything like that?
Let me get, let me make sure I've got the right location, in addition to pole number, the street address, and we'll get somebody to take a look.
It's on McLean Street?
Mm-hmm.
And I'd have to get you the actual address. But the pole number's two-five-six-A-Adam, J-John.
Okay.
I know to hear you talk about it and it is dark.
Yeah, it is dark in that little area over there.
Let me see if we can get up, find out who the contact person is with Duke Energy and we'll, we'll work toward that.
Okay, all right, awesome. And also with the police and fire ceremony we had tonight, just like, just like Councilwoman Covington said, and everybody else basically said the same thing. And they know those guys and girls do it all the time, every day. And I just think it's very appropriate that today, September tenth, two thousand and twenty-four, with the Marby and...
September eleventh.
Anniversary of the terrorist attacks, I think that could...
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Think about it, Ed.
Wouldn't have been there and done that. Thank you, I'm very honored. I appreciate that. I think that's a true expression of faith and confidence.
All in favor?
And if I could just add, the reason why I did that change tonight is I, I just want the city to be in a, a better place moving forward and not just dropping it on you all at one time. And there are many people that are qualified to serve in the role after October, whenever I get off the council, and I just want to say personally, from the standpoint of a good person that would be a, a possible candidate, that I would think, that I would hope that would at least be considered, and I have spoke to him and he is interested, the gentleman that has been just about at every meeting on the city council in reference to the property on Pine Street, former military, and I would just like to say he would be a really good candidate if, if he does show interest in that. And other than that, I look forward to the October meeting and concluding my tenure on Hamlet City Council.
Howard Wallace.
Howard Wallace.
Is the process that we would ask for applications?
So state statute specifies when you have a vacancy, council appoints new member. It's really up to council. I've seen councils simply select a person they believe to be qualified. I've seen others do a formal application and sort of interview process, so that may be a discussion you all want to have, is how you'd like to proceed.
And just to clarify, I did not make a motion for that. I cannot make a motion for that. That was just Jesse McQueen's personal opinion, and that's all I have.
All right, thank you. I have a couple of things. One is to just comment about the, the continued success of the pop-up market that we had last Saturday. I think it was the most vendors, about thirty, and we had actually some parking issues because we had so many people down there at one time, but that's a good problem to have. Also, the National Guard Armory had a ribbon cutting on, in Hamlet, had a ribbon cutting on Saturday. Their building that took about eighteen months to renovate is now pretty much complete, and they will be back in that building full-time. So we appreciate them being here locally. And then my other thing is the Lumber River Rural Transportation Organization, we need to make a nomination for a council member to be on their transportation advisory committee.
I'd like to nominate you, Mrs. Mayor.
I'll second that.
Okay.
I think you would make one.
All in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed?
I think you'd like that.
Well, we'll find out, maybe. All right, that's, so now we, I need a motion to go into closed session for...
Make a motion, we do.
Attorney-client privilege.
Second.
All righty. All in favor?
Uh.
Stay in contact.
Yes, I will. Thank you, yes, we're good.
All right.